Shall we convene and start with roll call?
All right, Commissioner Banta?
Here.
Commissioner Bowders?
Here.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Here.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Here.
Commissioner Kang?
Here.
Vice Chair Keller?
Here.
Chair Gunkel?
Here.
All seven Commissioners are present.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak to items that are not on the agenda tonight? No?
It's on the agenda.
Guess not, so, thank you. So then we'll move on to action recap.
Move the approval of the minutes.
I have a question. The last item on the agenda was a recommendation or request that City Council allocate funds of $2 million from other CIP projects. It was my understanding that that $2 million was to be allocated from the amount of money that was to be spent on undergrounding electrical power?
I don't believe that was the motion.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Bowders, no, I'm sorry, Commissioner, Chair Gunkel made the motion.
I made the motion. I'm curious, because I think I did make that recommendation, and then, but I wasn't certain that, we didn't pull that part out because of, in order to try to make...
I think you may have said that initially, but during the discussion, I believe it was modified to say just take it out of other CIP projects unspecified?
That's fine with me.
That's my recollection, yeah.
Yeah, it was discussed as such, but when it got to Commissioner Keller, he asked a clarifying question, and it was then explained to be this, I believe.
It's a general, yeah, okay.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Any... Without exception?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, then we'll move to the Director's Report. Charlie?
All right, so with regard to what the City Council has done since your last meeting, they've had two meetings, on April 5th and on April 19th. On April 5th, the Council approved a construction noise waiver for the Emory Unified School District for construction work at the Emeryville Center of Community Life project, and that would be on all Saturdays from April 9th to July 30th, excepting May 28th and July 2nd, which of course are the Memorial Day and Independence Day weekends. The request was for construction from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. In approving the request, the Council changed the starting time to 9:00 a.m. They also unanimously approved the installation of temporary experimental traffic calming measures on the Horton Street Bicycle Boulevard, which will consist of four slotted speed humps with associated pavement markings, signage, and new bicycle boulevard pavement markings. The wheel slots will allow fire trucks and bicycles to pass through without slowing, while normal vehicles and trucks would not be able to pass through the slots and will have to therefore go over the humps. On April 19th, the Council honored Assistant Planner Sarah Billing as the city's Employee of the Quarter for the first quarter of 2016, and in a few minutes, you will see why. The Council also accepted the Christie Avenue Bay Trail project as complete, and also accepted the Joseph Emory Skate Spot project as complete. The Council approved a construction noise waiver for the Stanford Health Center at 5800 Hollis Street for a crane lift on Saturday, April 23rd. The request was for 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. In approving the request, the Council changed these hours to 8:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. And finally, the Council passed the first reading of an ordinance regulating the delivery of medical marijuana in Emeryville. In other news, there are a couple of upcoming workshops, community workshops, on the Public Art Master Plan, which I want to call to your attention. I'm not sure if you would have received these postcards in the mail. I did email you a couple of days ago an announcement, which is basically the same as what this postcard says. These community workshops, there are two of them, one on Wednesday, May 11th, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., the others on Saturday, May 14th, from 10:00 a.m. till noon. They are both at Bullseye Glass at 4514 Hollis Street, and they will feature family-friendly art glass activities, art discussions, and refreshments. So again, that's Wednesday, May 11th, 5:30 to 7:30, and Saturday, May 14th, from 10:00 to noon. I also want to let you know that there will be a grand opening celebration for the Christie Avenue Bay Trail, and that's the bike path that runs next to Christie Avenue by the Black Bear Diner there between Shelmond Street and Powell Street, and that will be on Bike to Work Day on Thursday, May 12th, starting at 9:30 a.m. Finally, I just want to ask you all a question, which is that, as you may know, we are currently in the midst of preparing the final environmental impact report for the Sherwin-Williams project, and I have been asked to ask you, how many of you would like hard copies of that document? It will consist of the response to comments document and the draft EIR. We previously gave you all the draft EIR, but we gave it to you electronically, so we didn't give you hard copies of the draft EIR, and I didn't hear anybody ask for a hard copy, but we'd just like to know if any of you would like a hard copy of the final, which includes the response to comment and the draft EIR. If not, we'll give you electronic. You'd like one?
How big is it?
I don't, I don't really know, it'll, you know...
It's like 800 pages, probably?
Yeah, I imagine, including the draft EIR, certainly.
Do you have to print it, or does Sarah have to print it?
Mira has to arrange to have it printed.
I'm not going to punish the employee of the quarter here.
No, you'll be...
I'm okay with electronic, thank you.
I'm hearing one, anybody else?
How many, oh, how many pages are the responses to our, or to the comments?
I, yeah, it's not finished yet, I would say, I saw the draft, about half the draft, RTC, it's, you know, however many pages that is, it's about an inch thick, maybe?
That's the responses, okay.
Then that's about half of it.
All right. I'm fine with digital.
If it's possible to separate that piece out, I would actually like that part in hard copy.
Sure, that'll be a separate document.
I could do that, thanks.
So, Bowders would like the RTC, and I'm assuming Commissioner Kang, you would like both?
Yes, please.
Okay. Anybody else want a hard copy? Oh, Commissioner Banta?
Yes, please.
Did you want both?
Yes, please.
Okay. Anybody else? Nope? Okay, so I'm hearing Commissioners Bowders, Kang, and Banta would like the response to comments, and Commissioners Kang and Banta would like the draft EIR.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
Oh, sir.
The final EIR, is that scheduled tentatively for May or June?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that too, July.
Oh, July.
We tentatively have the final EIR scheduled for your July meeting. So, I mean, we're not going to be sending you this hard copy like next week. I just need a count right now so that Mira can plan how many she needs to print.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, so that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Charlie. Then if we could move to disclosures of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications.
I met with, excuse me, I met with Kevin Ma of Linear Properties regarding the Sherwin-Williams site.
I spoke to Ken Bukowski about the item on study session today.
I met with the applicant of the study session item when they were interviewing architects.
I didn't talk to anybody.
You didn't talk to anybody?
Nope.
All right. Thank you. So that said, then we'll move to the study session item. This is a six-unit townhouse project proposal on Doyle Street.
As stated, this is a presentation on a proposed six-unit townhome development on 5876 and 5880 Doyle Street. The site is located on the east side of Doyle Street, just south of 59th Street and north of Powell Street. The project consists of demolishing existing units and existing accessory structures, which requires City Council approval whenever you demolish existing residential units, and then to replace them with six new units, four new three-bedroom units and two new two-bedroom units. One of the required findings for demolishing existing residential units is that they must be replaced. Here's some existing site photos. You can see there's some utilities along the public right-of-way fence up against the sidewalk area.
Sarah, before you get too far, can you go back a slide?
Absolutely.
When we have to replace light for light, are we talking about just, we have to replace the legal light for light, or are we required to replace the illegal light?
The code doesn't really address that issue. I, I, I don't know, I don't really want to opine on that, but since they are providing six units and they're existing six units, it's kind of a moot point.
Well, for me, it was that we're replacing four and getting six, so to me, that's a plus, depending on how you look at it.
Well, you're replacing four legal and getting six legal, yeah.
My only question was whether the illegal units are occupied.
The applicant is here tonight to address those questions.
Thank you.
Well, this, things should say two illegal units, shouldn't it, rather than two legal?
Well, technically, yes, it should say that. My apologies. Thank you for noting that in my... All right. So, okay, so we've looked at this slide already. So here's the existing site plan, and on the north edge of the existing building, it's right along the property line, there's some accessory structures in the middle and the rear of the two properties, and then on the south property, there's one more existing building. So the current proposal is to demolish all of what we just spoke about, and to replace them with two new existing buildings, each building containing three units and each unit on three floors. The front unit here, both of them have entrances directly onto Doyle Street. If you were to stand in the center driveway and face south, you would see the elevation on the top of the screen, and if you were to stand in the middle driveway and face north, you would see the top, I mean, the bottom elevation, my apologies. And then here's the east elevation, so that's the rear of the buildings by the common open space, and side elevations. So at the top there is what the neighbors to the south would see, of course, there'd be a fence along the bottom floor, and at the bottom elevation is what the neighbors to the north would see. And here is a rendering from North Street facing, Doyle Street, pardon me, facing south, and from Doyle Street facing north. So for zoning districts, this is located in a mixed-use residential zone where multi-use residential is permitted, and sites of less than one acre, which is, do not require a mix of uses. It's also a North Hollis overlay, and that doesn't modify anything about the permitted uses. For zoning analysis, the FAR is base permitted is .5 with bonus up to 1.0, and the proposed project is 1.0, so it would require 100 bonus points to obtain full FAR. Residential density, they could have up to eight units with the bonus points, and the applicant is proposing six units. The maximum building height is 30 feet, no bonus available for that, and they are proposing 30-foot tall buildings. For the parking, one space is estimated demand per unit plus .2 spaces for guest. The permitted range, because you can go to a third less than that, to 10% more, is five to eight, and the applicant is proposing seven, one within each unit, and then one guest parking space at the rear. Bicycle parking is one space per unit, and then one for every four guest car spaces, pardon me. So that's seven required spaces, and they're exceeding that with, by having one bicycle space in each unit, and then a covered parking area for bicycles towards the rear of the property. For setbacks in the MUR zone, no side or front setbacks are required when the zone is not a budding residential zone, so there are no side or front setbacks required. There is a 10-foot rear setback required because the rear of the property abuts the RM zone. For the NH overlay, there's a 15 feet of required landscaping and sidewalk area between the face of the curb along the street and the face of the building, and this exceeds that, I think it's about 16 and a half feet. So the proposed project does exceed all setback requirements. For open space, there is 40 square feet of private open space per unit is required, and 20 square feet of common open space per unit. Each unit has a balcony and a patio on the first floor, and there's also common open space in the back that cumulatively far exceeds the open space requirement. And that speaks to the landscaping, 10% of the site area must be landscaped, and while we haven't received landscaping details at this time, it's clear that, as shown, this project can accommodate that. So for those 100 bonus points, we talked about needing to get the maximum FAR. Here is a list of community benefits that are provided under the code, all of them with a maximum of 50 points available. The two the applicant is suggesting at this point are having the project be zero net energy and providing additional family-friendly units. So speaking to those in detail, the Emeryville regulations are not very detailed. 100% of energy load equals 50 bonus points, and percent of total building energy load measured as kilowatt per square foot provided by solar panels, wind turbines, or other renewable resources, the definition. The applicant proposal states that the total amount of electricity, so not energy load electricity, used by the project annually does not exceed the amount of renewable electricity created on-site or at other buildings belonging to the owner in Emeryville. So the standard definition by the Department of Energy is that an energy-efficient building, for a zero energy, for a zero-energy building, where on a source energy basis, the actual annual delivered energy is less than or equal to the on-site renewable exported energy. So that's basically saying that whatever energy is produced on-site during the year is equal or greater than the energy that comes onto the site if it's tied into the grid. So at some points during the year, you might have more energy being contributed to the grid, and at some points of the year, you might have more energy coming from the grid, but by the end of the year, it all balances out. So for community benefits proposed for additional family-friendly units, the requirement typically is that 50% of the units have to be family-friendly. However, this is fewer than 10 units, and so that requirement does not apply. So in order to get the bonus points, a maximum, of which there's a maximum of 50, and it's given in five-point increments, five bonus points for each additional 5% of units that are family-friendly, the applicant would have to provide 50% of the units to be family-friendly. The applicant is proposing that 100% of the units be family-friendly, and they're exceeding the number of units that need to be of three-bedroom as well.
Let me just clarify one thing about this. This is a little confusing, the way the code is written, I guess. It's, for each 5% of family-friendly units, you get five points. Of the 5%, 1% has to be three-bedroom or more, so it's every 4% two-bedroom or more, and it plus 1% three-bedroom or more. So in other words, if it was 50% being family-friendly, then 10% of the total units would have to be three-bedroom or more, if that makes sense. It's not 1% of the total units, it's for every five points, it's 1%. Okay?
So the applicant hasn't provided details on family-friendly design at this point, but based on the site plans have been provided, or units, pardon me, unit designs have been provided, the family-friendly requirements could be met with some minor modifications and by specifying certain things such as pantry and the kitchen, entry coat closet, those types of requirements. So this is the unit design for Unit A. So the entrance to this faces Doyle Street, and like all the units in the three floors, the second floor having the main common living space, and the third floor having three bedrooms. Unit B is located in the middle of each building, so there's two Unit Bs as well. Ground floor garage, middle floor also having the common shared space, and then the third floor having the bedrooms. And then Unit C is at the rear of the property, and these are the two-bedroom units, with the two-bedroom units being, or two bedrooms, rather, being located on the top floor. So some comments were received from neighbors that there is a redwood tree that I tried to show in this picture, but it's a little sketchy. There's concern that the, both the canopy of this redwood tree, as well as the roots, would be impacted by where the northeastmost unit is proposed, and that excavation work would impact this tree, and they're concerned about the health. And then also for the project design, that the 30-foot height could provide some shading to the property to the north, so they're wondering if there's a potential to slope the roofs a little bit towards the north. And there's also an existing brick fence along that property line, between this property and the north property, and the neighbors would like to keep it, which would probably require some structural bracing after the demolishing of existing buildings which are right up on the property line.
Who owns the brick fence? Is it the neighbor who owns it?
I don't know who owns the fence specifically, I have not checked into that. So this was reviewed at the last DCC meeting, where multiple departments, PD, planning, public works, et cetera, come together. Staff comments were to underground utilities and place street trees at 25-foot intervals to match the conditions across the street, to increase the landscaping strip to 3 and 1/2 feet that's placed between the curb and the sidewalk. What's required is three feet, but the thought is that the 3 and 1/2 feet will help facilitate tree growth with the root, provide a little more area for that. And then to add a street-facing access for the waste collection, and to relocate guest parking, and I'll go over the last two of those items in the next few slides. So for waste collection, the standard is to avoid placing bins in the street, there's problems with them being knocked over, all sorts of issues I'm sure you're familiar with. So what this picture is depicting, the red lines are showing path of travel from someone collecting the waste to the proposed trash areas, which are located on either side of the proposed driveway. So as shown without these red markups, they can be accessed only from the rear, which is great for the residents, but does not meet the standards for waste management that collects the trash. So the idea is to add a little pathway and doors that are secured, obviously, facing the street as well, and it wouldn't require a change in materials, just a change in functionality. So also, for parking in open space, there's a bit of a trade-off. As proposed, this picture here is showing the rear two units, the driveway in the middle, and open space in the back. What the applicant showed is towards the north, there being guest bike parking space in line with the northeast unit, and a guest vehicular space in line with the southeast unit. Staff suggested that by moving those to the very back of the driveway here, it would almost double the common open space at the rear of the property, and we'll be asking for your feedback on that today. So issues to be considered are the development bonus points. Is the commission satisfied with having the proposed unit mix, 100% two-or-more-bedroom family-friendly units, and zero net energy qualify for the 100 required community benefit bonus points? For common open space, does the commission have any suggestions for features to include in or the design of the common open space at the rear of the property? For parking, does the commission agree with staff that guest parking should be relocated in order to increase the amount of common open space? And for design, does the commission have any feedback generally speaking regarding the design of the overall project, landscaping, or unit design? The project applicant, Jake Aftergood, is here, and he would like to address the commission, and we're both available for questions.
Are there any questions for staff?
I do, but it's something that maybe, the PowerPoint slide, the two or three slides about the zero net energy, is it possible to print those while he's presenting to review them? Because I want to think about that a little more, I don't want to hold that up. I don't know, I normally don't make a request like that, but it's not in the packet.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Any other questions for staff before staff comes to the copying machine?
When we're looking at the parking requirements with the range of parking being five to eight spaces, is there any consideration as to whether the guest space is one of the ones that can be dropped? Since there's six that are specifically in unit, and then there's the extra...
I don't recall there being a specific division of that.
No, the code requirement is, just kind of adds them all together and then gives you a range. I think there's language that says guest spaces are supposed to be separate from resident spaces, but I guess if the range is, what did you say the range was, five to eight? I suppose it would be legitimate to drop the guest space. I mean, it's still within the range of required parking.
Thank you.
And, let's see, .2 per unit, right?
How can the range be five to eight?
So, I'm sorry, sir, you'll have to wait until public comment? It's up to the discretion of the chair, but really...
It just, it says five to eight, there's six units, and it's supposed to be one space per unit, so one is...
We'll be opening this up to public comment in a minute. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, .2 spaces per unit, that would equal 1.2.
Right, so 1.2 guest parking spaces.
That would still round to one, huh?
What was that?
That would still round to one.
Yes.
All right. I'm just trying to think if you, if you could legitimately drop the guest space or not, I'm not sure. I'll have to think about that.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question about utility wires in your report. You mentioned that undergrounding of all utilities to match current conditions on the west side of Doyle Street is going to be proposed as a condition of approval, is that correct?
That's correct.
And this is something the applicant is aware of and agrees to?
We provided the notes to the applicant from the DCC meeting, as well as the staff report, and they've not raised it as an issue.
Just for my own edification, when you have an infill project like this, which is occurring in, more or less in the middle of the street, is there an overall plan for undergrounding the rest of the utilities on that street so it isn't done in a piecemeal fashion, or is there some other strategy than simply requiring each applicant to take care of their frontage?
Right, well, my understanding is it is standard for new projects to underground utilities, but there is an undergrounding plan for North Hollis area.
Well, and also Doyle Well, and also Doyle Street, the Greenway portion of Doyle Street, which extends all the way to Ocean Avenue, is already undergrounded. It's underground, Doyle Street is undergrounded from Ocean Avenue down to 59th Street currently, actually, all the way down to the north edge of this property currently. So this would just be extending an existing undergrounding district. It wouldn't be like a gap, and then there's wires to the north and wires to the south.
So I noticed when I was there at the site, that there is, appears to be sort of an ad hoc streetlight on one of the poles there. Am I incorrect in that?
I'm not sure. It's not uncommon to have streetlights attached to utility poles.
It looks like an LED streetlight. So if the poles are coming down, does the streetlight somehow, how would that account?
Yes, there would have to be a new streetlight installed. If you look to the north of 59th Street, you'll see freestanding streetlights. And that's standard in any undergrounding district.
All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff? Thank you.
I'm going to print those copies.
Thank you. Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Jake Aftergood. I'm the applicant for the project that Sarah just presented. And I don't think I could have presented the project any better myself, so I'm not going to try. But I am available to answer questions if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
I just want to know if any of the units are occupied.
My understanding is that currently, one unit is occupied.
Is it an illegal or a legal unit?
It's an illegal unit.
Okay. That's my only question.
So I have a few questions for you. There was some comment about the redwood tree that I presume is on your property. Are you, are you planning on conserving that tree?
It's a good question. So the, my understanding is that the, the branches and the root system may be, I guess, carrying over onto our property. I think they originate from the neighboring property.
So is the tree on the neighbor's property?
Right.
I see. I see.
So, but that being said, I don't have an answer to your question, other than that I just learned about this condition recently. And, you know, I think I'm going to do my best to keep the trees. But I just don't have an answer to your question yet, because I haven't really looked into the matter.
Okay. I've got some other questions as well. So you mentioned that you're looking for 50 bonus, bonus points from the net zero energy criteria that you're fulfilling. I looked at your drawings, and I, I didn't see any designation for photovoltaic panels or other energy-producing systems on your project. Can you illuminate me about how that's going to be achieved?
Sure. So I've spoken with the project team about this, and we would like to propose putting the PV panels on another site in the city. And, you know, we can provide more detail about that. But that's what our proposal is going to be. It didn't make it into the submittal that you're looking at, but that's where we're at at this point.
So the, the concept is that the 50 points you're looking for will be for forthcoming performance on this net zero energy system that may be located in another, on another building, apparently owned by the property owner. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the, the, how do you guarantee or demonstrate that this, you in fact are fulfilling that net zero, that you're meeting all the energy demands of the site? How do you propose to do that?
I don't know the answer to that. But I guess the idea would be that we would be offsetting the electricity energy used on the site of this project. And we'd be offsetting that with photovoltaic, you know, I guess, energy captured on another site in the city. So we, we would promise to make a one-to-one match electricity-energy-wise.
Right. Well, we would certainly welcome your promise, but we'd obviously like to have some other means by which to prove that you actually are achieving those numbers. So that would be something you want to think about, how you might be, how you might arrange for that to happen.
Right. Well, you know, I think that, I think that if, you know, if we were to put those panels on this site, we would demonstrate the, the net zero energy effect anyway. And we would demonstrate that by hiring a professional energy modeler to demonstrate that for us. So we would do the same thing, and just measure, measure the energy load and generation that's happening on another site.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And I just have a couple of comments about your plans.
If I may, the comments are generally after...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I do have questions now, again. Go ahead, Stephen.
So you're talking about being net zero energy, and, but yet you're going to produce energy, or reproduce energy by electricity elsewhere. Are you going to offer gas stoves and gas heat? And if so, how are you going to offset? Because energy is energy, electricity is a specific type of energy. So if you're going to offset and be net zero, then you have to offset the gas that you're using on the site as well. So I don't know if you're going to produce extra energy in electricity that exceeds what your units use, because we need to see that. And my own particular taste is I would need to have that as a condition of approval, that before you got the permit to occupy, the photovoltaics would be in the location and operational. Because I'd want, the minute these switched on, I'd want the net zero happening. And you have to, you have to account for the gas use as well.
Okay.
Because that's, when you're saying it's net zero energy, you're not seeing a net zero electricity. So you need to offset all the energy that you're using on this site by some other means. So just as, unless you have that answer for me, so be prepared to have that when you come back again.
Thank you, Steve. Can we keep our questions to questions?
Well, that was kind of a question, asking if they had that offset in the plan. If not, I was just letting them know.
I have a couple of questions. So you're proposing an alternative site to offset energy inside the city. A commercial structure or residential structure? Is there an address for this site?
I haven't picked a site yet. I have a few to choose from, but they're all commercial sites.
Okay. And, so, I mean, I think it's an unanswered question, as staff, I think, presented, that offsetting it doesn't, this is a new, this is the first attempt to do this. If this, and I'm trying not to make a comment or a suggestion, I'm trying to ask it as a question here, but if we didn't feel that you had a plan to actually do this wall, or we didn't believe that it was okay, if I told you I wouldn't be able to support that, what would be your alternative way of getting your points?
Well, I don't at the moment, but I would either try to generate the offset energy onsite, or I would look at another community benefit point category.
Okay. But you haven't thought about that in detail. It appears, at least. I'm just checking.
Not in detail.
Okay.
So I had a question, Mr. Aftergood, about your landscaping. Do you know, at least generally speaking right now, what type of landscaping is in your plan? I didn't really see it detailed anywhere. What kind of plants?
It's a good question. I don't know the answer at this point.
Do you have any idea at all about whether you would use water-thirsty lawns, or more drought-resistant landscaping? Has it, is that part of your consideration right now?
It is. And we've thought about that, and personally, I'm leaning towards more drought-resistant landscaping. But I just, I don't have an answer to that question yet.
Okay, thank you.
Is this to be a condominium?
Yes. These will be condominiums for sale.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I do. So if it's going to be, who actually would, would it be the HOA that would have ownership over the PVs? Is that what you're envisioning?
Most likely, but that's also something that I just haven't looked into yet.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
No, I have one of staff, though.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Chair Gunkel?
Yes.
May I just comment on a couple of things?
Sure.
First, on the zero net energy community benefit. The language in the code is what Sarah had up there on the slide, and what you have now in front of you on hard paper. I would note that previously, before we streamlined the bonus point system, you may recall that we had a category for energy efficiency, and it was a little more specific. It talked about the California Energy Code, and the percent by which you reduced the project's energy as compared to the California Energy Code earned you bonus points, up to a maximum of, I think it was 50 points, for zero net energy. So currently, the code doesn't make any reference to the California Energy Code. It just says you got to produce all the energy you use. It doesn't explicitly say "on the site," but I'm pretty sure that was the intent. When this was written, it never occurred to us that it would be produced somewhere else than on the site. I would also note that if the commission were inclined to approve such a community benefit, that, that these bonus points would be granted in order to provide additional building potential on this site, which is in perpetuity. That means that whatever the community benefit is, that it's based on, also has to be provided in perpetuity. So if the commission were willing to grant, say, solar panels on a warehouse somewhere, those would have to be there for the life of this project, which would greatly affect the development potential of that other site. So that's just something to bear in mind. I also...
Charlie, could I expand on that, so, before you leave that subject? So if they had a warehouse that they wanted, and we, and we made it a condition of approval that these solar panels are in perpetuity, but say they develop that site, and could they not just re-put those solar panels on the new development?
Well, I suppose they could. They'd have to prove to you that they were doing that, and they'd also couldn't use that as bonus points for that development.
Correct. Okay.
I also just want to point out one of the findings that the commission, and ultimately the city council, will need to make in approving this project. For bonus points, one of the findings now is that the proposed community benefits for the project are acceptable and appropriate in this case, and will provide tangible benefits to the community. In other words, it's up to the commission to decide whether or not you accept the community benefits that are offered. And if you don't accept them, then the applicant will have to come up with something different.
I have a question. So do, does the, does the zoning code actually state, or use the term "zero net energy," or how?
Yes.
So that's basically...
That's the term that's used.
That's the term that's used.
Does not say "onsite," though, which is oversight.
Well, I guess it's, I mean, maybe this is a question for the applicant again, but is your intention to somehow, how are you planning to, if you did have the PV offsite, how are you planning on providing that electricity to the, or that energy, to the residents of this complex onsite? Or providing them an offset? Or how, how are you planning on kind of making that transfer happen?
I think at this point, it's really intended to be an offset. And so, if the energy used at the site of the PV panel installation is equivalent to the energy used at this project site that we're talking about tonight, then it would be a one-to-one offset. And if it's not, well, obviously, if the six-unit residential project site has a lower energy demand than the commercial site that's offsite, then, then the offset would be more than one-to-one. And then if, if, if it's the other way around, if the residential site is using more energy than, than the commercial site is using, then, then it could be the case that the PV panels would provide energy back to the grid. And then that would create a one-to-one offset, at least.
Are you prepared to somehow come up with a system or means by which those, I mean, to me, I guess my question is, are you prepared to come up with a system or means by which the residents of this building get a net, like, basically have net-free energy over any given year?
Can you repeat that question?
I guess I'm just, like, in my, I mean, in my mind, the net, without trying to get into a comment here, net zero energy would mean that the residents of the building over any given year, on average, would not have to pay for any energy. Are you prepared to come up with a system by which that's the case?
I'm happy to look into it.
Okay. Just curious.
I have just a question, and I don't know if I've missed it, but it kind of seems like an obvious question we haven't asked. Why are the PVs not going on this project?
Um...
I mean, I don't understand the trade-off, if there's like, not enough sun, or what the deal is, to why we can't be just doing it on the project itself.
Right. I think it's, again, thus, thus far, in, in our planning process, we're looking at marketability, and, and we're also looking at, looking at, I guess, visibility of features from the street. So we, we're trying to balance a number of factors, and so, so we think it'd be nice if there were no PV features visible from the street, as one example. Another example is that we think it'd be marketable if there was room for potentially, I guess, outdoor space on the roof area of the, of the project. So there's, you know, not only limited real estate on the ground level, but there's limited real estate throughout the project, including on the roof. So we're, we're looking at ways that we can give ourselves the most flexibility and space to create a marketable project.
This proposal doesn't include a roof deck.
Right. We're, we're not proposing one at this point, but we, we're, like I said, we're looking at ways to maintain as much flexibility as we can, in terms of how we're developing the project at this point, and how it could be modified or improved in the future.
I have a question, I think, Charlie, for you. You mentioned the community benefits proposed, utility undergrounding, maximum 50 points. Now, does, I'm confused. The utility undergrounding is being asked for as a condition of approval, but does that disqualify the applicant from counting those 50 points towards their, their bonus points?
Yes, it does. Bonus points are only for community benefits that are voluntarily offered by the applicant, that are above and beyond any code requirements, or any requirements that might be imposed through mitigation measures or conditions of approval. So if the city were to impose a condition that the utilities in front of the project had to be undergrounded, that would not be eligible for bonus points. However, if the applicant voluntarily said, "I will underground..." However, if the applicant voluntarily said, "I will underground the utilities, say, on the entire block, all the way to Powell Street," that additional undergrounding that is not required by the city would be eligible for bonus points.
Thank you.
Chair, I'm sorry to do this, Mr. African, I actually have a follow-up question for you, based on some of the other questions that my colleagues have asked. When you said you were considering other properties to put the photovoltaic panels somewhere in this vicinity, I imagine if you're gonna put them in another location, you're gonna need some kind of transmission lines to use over PG&E system or other system. Have you inquired with PG&E, since you are actively pursuing consideration of off-site locations, and disabuse me if I'm incorrect in stating that? Have you contacted PG&E or whoever's electric grid you need to use to transmit that energy to this proposed site?
No, I haven't looked into that yet.
Okay. Do you have plans to?
Certainly. I think that, I hope to work with either the commission or staff as we talk more about this project.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for the applicant?
Not for the applicant, for staff. Yeah, I have one for staff. I want to ask a question about the family-friendly units. So the current regs that we have don't require them for less than 10, right?
Correct.
But we're able to give bonus points. So I'm just wondering hypothetically, if somebody was building a single unit on this property, because that would be 100% of the units, and they said it's a three-bedroom, we would just give them 50 bonus points? I mean, that's 50 bonus points.
Yeah, that's not...
If they were building a single unit, they wouldn't...
Well, but that's, but the additional family-friendly piece doesn't apply to units of, properties with units of 10 or less, so I'm wondering why we give bonus points to something that if they had, if they built a two-unit, if he says, "I'm gonna build a condo on one side of the driveway," or apartment on one side and apartment on the other, those are each 50%, he could get 25 points and 25 points. He could get all 50 points just from building two, two- or three-bedroom, one, two- and one-three-bedroom unit. It just seems like a race to 50 points way too fast. It almost makes me feel like maybe there's a loophole or a clarification required, but it should be that if you're not required to provide them, you shouldn't also be eligible to get bonus points because you fell under 10 units. It incentivizes lower density. Since someone will build under 10 units to not be required to do it, then they can take all the bonus points by putting family units in it.
Well, it's not all the bonus points.
Well, half of them, though.
Half of them, yes, yes.
Okay, I have opinions on that now, okay.
Well, right, I mean, ordinarily, a project is required to get half their bonus points by providing affordable units, so that would be 50 of your points right there. But as a ownership project of less than 10 units, it's not required to provide affordable units, so they've got...
We're handing out on a percentage basis to somebody who's less than 10 now.
Right, they've got to get 100 bonus points from two categories besides the affordable units. Now, I would point out that there is the flexible community benefit, which is undefined. It's really up to the applicant to propose something if they want to choose that, but they could come up with something creative, like, say, 100% of the units are family-friendly and for 100 points, or half the units are, or some percentage of the units are affordable, which is not required.
Only the city council can approve that.
Correct, but the city council has to approve this project anyway, because it involves the demolition of residential units.
Are there any other questions?
We have the material board here that we wanted to pass around.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Bryan, I have actually a question for you, just a very basic question. The illegal units that are at play on this site, oh, could you specify what makes them illegal?
Lack of building permits. And, I mean, it's not just that they don't have building permits. We haven't really, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, but I don't believe we've actually investigated these units. It's possible that if we were, we would discover that there were code violations as well, such that they wouldn't be able to get a building permit. I don't know that that's the case, but that could be the case.
So what we don't, what we know for sure is that there's a lack of building permits.
Correct.
Okay.
The only checking into this that I've done beyond what the applicant has provided is I did look up the assessor information, which is not always 100% accurate, but it did match up with what the applicant provided. It's, the numbers provided by the assessor's office matched the legal unit information.
Four units?
Yes.
The assessor says there's four units here.
Well, there's two separate properties, one, I don't remember the division, one with one unit, I think, one with three, is that correct?
So the site has a total of four units, according to the assessor?
That's correct.
So are there, is the city required to, upon discovery of an illegal unit, to initiate an investigation to find out what other violations there might be?
Well, we generally operate on a complaint basis because we don't have resources to go out and correct every code violation in the city.
But the applicant's proposing six units, and they're even including the illegal units, there are only six onsite.
I think the question is more to, we're giving permits, we're giving permission for somebody to do something while we, there's a known violation of existing code regs. It's like this person...
But they're proposing removing that.
Well, yeah, now, but we, right now, they, we haven't approved anything, and there's an illegal use going on, so...
Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Thank you. So then we'll open up public comment. Are there members of the public who would like to speak to this item? Please step up. And after you're done speaking, so it'll be a three-minute time limit, and then after you're done speaking, if you could sign in over there.
Okay, oh, three minutes. My name is Judy July, and I live at 5889 Bodry Street, and our property is adjacent on the east side of the 5880 Doyle Street property. While I think that new development will be a neighborhood improvement, we do have a few concerns. Mainly, the 30-foot height of the building will block views to the west, which means we'll probably lose afternoon sun on our garden and views of the sunset. The view into our yard from neighboring windows may tend to feel intrusive. Our house is a two-story house with an attic, and I believe the peak of the attic is about 30 feet. On the property line in the back, I'm hoping that a new survey will be done to determine the property line. According to the site plan, it looks like we're gonna lose some feet in our yard, and it could be that the existing fence is not along the property line. And I believe that our neighbor to the south will lose even more, according to that site plan. So I have a question, will a survey be required, new survey? Also interested to know, what is the height required and the type of fencing that might be built between the two properties? Right now, I have some pictures of what the property looks like from viewing toward the west, and the shed that is existing there now is our back wall. I'm happy to pass these around.
We can put those on the overhead projector.
Okay, that's fancy. So the other question I have is, since I only have three minutes, I'm gonna keep going. The anticipated timeframe, the timeline, when will the project likely occur? I'm thinking about the demolition will create dust and debris, and I'm worried a little bit about hazardous materials, such as the demolition of lead-painted wood, possible asbestos from ceiling panels, and anything else, I don't know what. Okay, let's see. So this is looking at the property from our back deck toward the shed, and then this one is looking toward the south, I'll see, southwest on this side, looking toward the white building. This is on the other side, looking towards Siegel and Strain Architects where the redwood tree is. And then this one is also from the back deck. This is from my upper window, the third-story window, looking out, so from this view, I'd be looking at the big orange rectangle, according to the drawings, which is, you know, like I say, I think it's gonna be an improvement to the neighborhood, so... If trees are destroyed in the demolition, is there a possibility, if some of our trees or plants are destroyed, is there a possibility of getting new plants, replacing those? And then there's, we have neighbors who also have coastal redwoods, not only Siegel and Strain, but my neighbor, and, you know, we just want to make sure that these are significant trees.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
You may have these if you want.
I want to provide you a picture of what the property looked like.
Could you, could that be placed up on the overhead?
I guess so, yeah.
We got it, Ken.
All right. My name is Ken Bukowski, I've lived there 35 years. I was the owner of the property for 25 years before I sold it to Ken Smear, actually. Jake is Ken Smear's nephew. A couple comments. There's only one illegal unit there, and Charlie will remember very well that at 5880 we went through this extensively about whether one or two units was permitted, because there was a prior there in 2002, and it was $160,000 damage, and Charlie and I went over that extensively, that there are two legal units there, so staff is aware of that. I think requiring the undergrounding of the utilities, I think, would be an unfair burden here. I don't know what it costs, but I know it's very expensive, and there's many residential projects that were not able to go forward because of the high cost of undergrounding the utilities. The, there are six units here, and I'm the only tenant left. The four-unit building has a lot of problems. The water pressure in that building has been so low for years, it was barely usable, and the floors are falling apart, it's just in need of a lot of repair, and I couldn't afford those repairs, and they really can't either. If you see what it looked like when we first bought it, it was really in bad shape at that time. We poured 170 yards of cement, and then we put the fence up, and it's been that way for a while. I mean, I've enjoyed living there, but the dry rot on my house, on that, I mean, you could probably punch a hole right through it. I'm not even sure how it continues to stand, so... And I'm in the process of relocating to another undisclosed location in town, and you'll know where that is when I get there. And so I would support the project, I think it's an entity. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And could you sign in if you haven't already?
I live with Judy in the same house backing the project. If the applicant is unsure of...
Sir, could you state your name for the record, please?
Norman Mayo. Yeah, the applicant, the applicant has a lot of fuzzy edges, a lot of stuff isn't very definite. If he wanted to put solar panels on my house to get points, I would accept that. Just to let you know that this, we pushed this button for it to go on.
No, no, it's on, it's on.
To let you know that from our deck, which is on the second story, those juniper...
Could you speak into the microphone? Could you speak into the...
They were planted in 1985, and they, they're a good source of shading us and keeping this new project from people looking down into our yard. We have a beautiful garden, it wasn't very obvious to you, but, and we feed people. It has fruit trees, and used to have bees, I'll get some back, vegetables and stuff, and we're worried about the sun. We figured one of these days, because that's a commercial area, buildings will grow on that side, but I think three stories is kind of ridiculous, because we suddenly are in a canyon where we're just, our backyard is, we're looking at people who can be looking at us. And the offset, I think, is 20 feet, but I didn't see it in the plan. That was something we need to do. And the property line is crooked, and my juniper trees are two feet from the, from the back of this wall right here, and I'm hoping that they don't get destroyed when the fence is built. And the redwood trees are twins, they're like sisters. If one of those trees is destroyed, the lifespan of the other trees is in jeopardy because they all share the same root structure.
Thank you. Well, this is just a study session, so, I mean, I think we can, I mean, I think let's move on to anyone else who'd like to speak, and then maybe if, if no one else wants to speak, we could let you come up for a minute. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item?
Can I have a minute?
Sure, a minute and a half each of you guys, thanks.
I wondered if, when you demolish the property, can a fence be built immediately to secure the properties behind, you know, for security and safety and privacy? And that might be it? Oh, yeah, hours of construction. How early will you start?
Thank you.
Okay, with respect to the brick fence, that does belong to the neighboring property owner, but the redwood tree is pushing, pushing that fence up, that brick, the bricks are starting to separate, so I don't know how long, how long that brick wall would stand up. And as far as the property line goes, if you go and you look at the townhouse property, which is right next door, they have 10 additional feet to the east that this property doesn't, so I'm not, one of those is probably correct. I don't know whether it's the townhouse property line or this one, but the townhouse property line is 10 feet back, even though the lines in the map show that they're, you know, the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak? Then I'm gonna close public comment and go to commissioner comments. Start with Sam.
So when we normally get applications for proposals, I really appreciate the level of just detail and thoroughness, and there's obviously a lot of work that occurred, not just by the applicant themselves, but also a lot of cooperation, and mutual cooperation that was done with our city staff. And the level of specificity, even at the study session stage, is extremely evident, and it's still presented as a final product, because inevitably, we dig into the weeds a lot, with a lot of questions and things to consider. Tonight's application seems like a deviation from that. There were, I think, a lot of fundamental questions that I hoped the applicant would have been prepared for, but the answers just were not there. And quite frankly, I was disappointed by that. And I've said this before with a previous applicant in a previous commission meeting, that we really appreciate, all of us, on the dais, as well as in the public, really do appreciate all the hard work that staff puts in to do their jobs. And I hate to see it when all their hard work in making our city a better place to live is taken advantage of and taken for granted, because I hate to see their time wasted by having their hard work just being taken advantage of just because we, the applicant was not prepared to answer fundamental questions. And even more so, it's not just, we're not just doing it injustice to them as hard-working staff for the city, but also ultimately, it costs all of us as taxpayers who live in the cities as well. So very concerned about our, the public benefit and the public good when that takes place. So just a few of the specifics I want to go into are the following. I would love to see, before it comes back to the commission, because the applicant's got a lot of work to do, if, I hope the applicant was recording very assiduously, in his mind at least, what the questions were coming from the dais, because I certainly didn't see him write anything down. All the questions that we asked about why, why and how, where, when, for the photovoltaic... All the questions that we asked about why, why and how, where, when, for the photovoltaic, landscaping issues. So, I think all those questions really were not answered. So, I hope all those questions at least can be answered, by the next time it comes to, before us, at the next time, whenever that might be.
I want to agree with Commissioner Kang on a number of his initial remarks. I thought this proposal was really poorly presented tonight, not by staff, but by the applicant. Really disappointed in it. Didn't give us much to think about. So, I hope that the next time, to the points he made, that you think about some of the questions, because this is a really, not even a half-baked proposal, in my opinion. So, on the questions staff asked us to provide feedback on, I do not believe that the current proposal related to zero net energy is sufficient to get bonus points. It wouldn't make it past the very first question for me as a proposal right now. It's pretty clear that the common definition, and I thank you, Sarah, for getting these for me, the common definition of a zero-energy building includes a building that is energy-efficient. It's intended to be onsite. It's got to be a source for the energy, it's where, on a source-energy basis, the actual annual delivered energy is less than or equal to the onsite renewable exported energy, which implies that it's to and from the site. I don't like the idea of net energy elsewhere in the city for several reasons. You know, while I don't oppose using solar, photovoltaic, or other types of renewable energy elsewhere, turbines, there's no way to capture and track that. I also don't know how I feel about commercial uses doing this, because there are also tax benefits to properties for using these things. And so, we get into a very muddied mess of tax reasons for why some structures have them on the site. So, you could own basically a commercial property, get tax benefits for putting these types of renewable energy sources there that you couldn't get elsewhere, perhaps. And then, it's very difficult for city and staff to track what the import and export of that is. And something I didn't ask earlier, Charlie, but I think is, just to put a pin in it for later, not a question for you right now, is, is there a penalty for not producing? There isn't. So, if the net use of the property is X, and they only export or produce half of X, we don't have a fee, or a fine, or an amount equivalent. So, I kind of, at least not that I'm aware of, so, I'm not a fan of the current proposal for zero net energy. If you could come back onsite and show that you will actually be able to, to Commissioner Keller's other points, meet the actual energy demand, and either produce it onsite for use onsite, or export an amount equal to what you take off the grid, I think I could reconsider that. I'm not super thrilled with the affordable units piece, which is probably the weirdest thing coming from me. But it's not because I don't appreciate what you're trying to do. I think I can let go of that issue. I just, it, it seems like a lot of bonus points to give for a few units. So, I have to really think about it, because to me, this looks like a proposal that's looking to cut the edges on community benefits, and I'm not for that. That's what, that's maybe not be what you intend, but that's the optics of it for me. I am, in terms of-
You meant family-friendly, not affordable? Because they're not-
Family-friendly, thank you. I'm sorry. Yeah, family-friendly, yeah, there's not even an affordable unit here, but it's family-friendly. Thank you, Gail. I am, I support the staff's recommendation to relocate the parking space to the back of the driveway. I think the whole back of that property, minus the back of the driveway, should be green space. I think the setbacks that are proposed, that are in line with code, are appropriate. I think that meets some of the needs that the neighbors have, related to having a distance between the buildings, to prevent there from being a cavern effect. I am very concerned about the trees. I lived on Boudreaux Street until just a couple weeks ago, and walked my dog past those beautiful redwoods regularly. That's one of the things that makes that particular block pretty unique and beautiful, and so, I think there needs to be some further evaluation done, whether that's by the applicant or with staff, to determine what the impacts on those two particular trees would be. And it wouldn't hurt to see what the other vegetation that's been longstanding in the vicinity of this property would be, how it would be impacted in the course of doing I don't have any particular suggestions for how to use the common open space. Green, that's what I'm asking for, I think. As for the design, we didn't really even discuss that tonight. It was, we didn't, we didn't get to the real proposal and the detail pieces. It's a townhouse. It's a series of them. I don't like the big gabled thing over the driveway. I don't get it. I don't get it. I also don't like trash vestibules. I realize that they're enclosed, but I don't like trash vestibules that stick off of a property. They should be recessed, in my opinion. So, maybe increasing the green space up front in some way, and having the trash in a way that waste management can allow for the trash to come off from a place that's a little less prominent from the front of the building. Or find a way to, in design, to make, to beautify that in a way, so people don't look at it and think it's two giant doors that open up with trash in them. I mean, the floor plans don't, there's pieces of them that look incomplete. They don't necessarily strike me as meeting family-friendliness in all respects, but it's not detailed enough for me to evaluate it further. And I think there's way more base issues that haven't been addressed by this proposal. Were there any other questions that staff had? Bicycle parking, design, I'm not even going to talk about design, because I don't think we get there. I'll stop.
Well, I would, I would echo the comments that I've heard so far. This has a long, long way to go. Some of my biggest concerns, aside from the bonus point issues, are the transition in the neighborhood. This really is asking for a higher FAR, to have a bigger mast building with bigger bulk, more room. And the transitions to the adjoining and adjacent properties just are really not graceful at all. It doesn't fit very well. I have issues, also concerned about the trees, but the open space, I don't get really the patios that are only accessible through the driveways downstairs beneath where the living spaces are, and that open up onto five feet and then a wall. Those seem kind of awkward and not very useful to me. I think the interior circulation from the ground floor up is very awkward, and having the front entry to the units from the street come in underneath stairways where you have to go around, that whole ground floor seems not very well thought through. I don't think that there is a need for a guest parking in there, honestly. I live a block over, and during the daytime when workers are parking there, it's not when you would expect to be having guests that would park there. And there's not very much street parking, but nights and weekends, there's plenty of parking around there, except for the patrons of the townhouse and that. And I think that using the, putting in an additional parking space is a waste of the common space that could help to provide a transition to the other areas and the other properties around there. I think that the property really needs to be, the buildings need to be more designed on all sides, including the rear side, where there are people that you're interfacing What else? What else? I do, if, you know, whether there is just the bicycle parking or a guest parking space, I agree with the staff's recommendation that it not be taking up that additional common space, but be at the end of the drive aisle. And I just think that there's a lot of thought that needs to go into this before it goes forward.
Well, I agree with all the comments we've heard so far. I think we definitely need to see much more detail on the landscaping. And personally, I think the design of the buildings looks like some kid cut them out of cardboard boxes, and it could do with a lot more detail on the outside of the building instead of these, looks like texture 111 siding. I do like the idea of having for-sale family housing in Emeryville, which we haven't seen any of so far. And I hope the applicant can address all of the issues that have been brought up and provide a much more complete package the next time we have a review.
Yeah, let's see. To go down the points provided by the planning staff, the first one, development bonus points. I think all the comments about the net zero energy system that you're proposing, that's obviously has got to be well resolved. And I can't say that I would agree with your doubt about the, the appeal of having photovoltaics on the units themselves. I think actually, there are certain buyers for whom that would be considered, they would consider that to be a real bonus, that they're living in a place where their energy needs are being taken care of in this alternative fashion. And then there's the issue that Board Member Keller brought up, which is, one of the big benefits of living in a net zero facility is that you really have a zero utility bill. So, how are these people who are going to be living here, who are having regular grid energy being supplied to them, for which they're going to have to pay, how are they going to be compensated for the energy that's being generated elsewhere? That's a big question, and I'm pretty much a very difficult one to answer. So, I would reexamine your presumptions about, about the applicability of having alternative energy systems onsite, as has been expressed here by a number of the members. As far as the common open space and the parking, I have observations on those, and they're related to a number of comments I have for you, related to your design. This is my first term as a, as a, as a planning commissioner, so you'll excuse me if I get a little carried away with my observations here. But on your, on your plan, just starting from the street and going back, you have the, the redwood siding for, that covers the garbage enclosures, and then you have the portal, which is metal. Now, we, I think that that portal, I don't have a problem with having a kind of a gateway to a project. I think that's not such a bad thing. I would definitely use that as an opportunity to put lighting of some sort in there, so that it becomes a benefit to the street at night. And as far as those two enclosures for the trash areas there, I guess staff has noted that they would like to see, that you're going to have to do something that allows the pickup, an easy pickup from the street without going into the site. Well, it might be that there is a way to add some feature to those, such as a bench built into the doors that are going to be opening, that, that members of the community here could sit on while they're waiting to be picked up, or perhaps members of the public might just sit down if they want to just take a little rest on their walking the dog and so forth. But something that adds a bit of use and texture to the, to the street. And then your, your west elevation, it shows four large windows in each of the two front units, western-facing units. And if I understand your plans correctly, those four unit, those four windows are located where the stairs are going up. Is that, do I, am I reading that correctly?
Sure, looks like it is.
So, you've got these enormous windows, which, and I, you know, I'm sure that you'll have more detail for them the next time you present, but they don't, they appear to be plate glass windows. In other words, no operable elements to them. And they're facing west, so they're going to get tremendous gain. And they have a stair in front of them, which is not actually visible in the elevation here. So, there's something not quite right in what's going on there. Those elevations and that exposure is, it has terrific light and terrific views, to a certain extent. And you might want to look at perhaps relocating those stairs to the other side of your unit to take advantage of that. I have a similar comment on your units to the east. The units to the east have the stairways on the eastern edge, and you have the garage inset to the, to the western side of that unit. And then above on the second floor, you have the decks that are inset. So, the decks, instead of being on the corner, where you could get a nice sort of overlook to the common space in the back, and to the south or the north, depending on where you are, are closed in, hemmed in. And again, you have, you have your stairs occupying kind of the major light and view exposures for your units. And you go up to the third floor, and you have a, I think it's a walk-in closet in your, in your back corners of those units. And that, that seems to me, if you flipped that plan, you would get a much better, you know, opportunities for light and views, et cetera. Now, you're, you heard your neighbor talking about their concerns about privacy, and their trees that they have there that, that are working for them right now. And I think that it would not be unreasonable at all for us to ask for and expect that you do everything in your power to make sure that those trees are preserved and maintained, because they are, they are working for your neighbor, and therefore, they're working for the neighborhood. You might also consider, and I don't know if this is going to run contrary to the previous comments, but you might also consider making these two back units here, instead of three-story units, placing the, placing the parking back where you were going to have the additional guest parking, and making them two-story units. So, they step down to the, to the lower scale of the, of the buildings adjacent to you and your neighbors. So, I think, I think that's probably plenty to be, for you to be thinking about. Great, thanks very much.
May I ask for verification? Sorry to interrupt, but Commissioner Banta, I'm unclear why stepping down the rear two units would necessitate relocating the guest parking.
Well, I guess the thought was, he's, the way the plans are, the ground floor is occupied by a car.
The garage.
Oh, I see.
So, I'm saying, taking-
Take those cars outside.
Remove the garage, put them outside.
I see.
That's what I'm thinking.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I think you now understand what the, a study session is. It's that we look at your plans and give you a lot of critique on what we see, so I think you're getting that tonight. I do like the fact that these are for-sale units. That's going to earn a lot of points for me, because we need to get some ownership housing in Emeryville. The, I think, or hopefully you're hearing loud and clear that the trees are a concern, so you really need to work on that. The one thing that I am, as a pet peeve for me, and I've seen this project, is I really like to see a project being one-third or less stucco. So, I think in your plans, when you come back, either in a study session, but definitely in an approval, is I want to see how much of your building is stucco, and how much is in the materials. Again, the gate archway, I, the way it's designed right now, I think it looks like an add-on. I understand the importance of a presence, and I like that, but I think if you're going to do that, it needs to be a little bit more fleshed out. Right now, it looks like, oh, this is, I just stick this here. The garbage gates, I think, are important. I do not, in any project, I do not want to see what they're doing at the courtyards at six, you know, the courtyards at 65th, where the dumpsters sit on the street. I like them that they're behind gates, that they never have to go on the street. I like the idea of staff saying that, yo, make them accessible from the street side, so waste management never has to go on your property. Maybe put some artwork on them, maybe put some benches, whatever, but I think the gate idea is, is a really good idea. I don't understand, I don't know if staff can answer this or not, but the bonus room downstairs seems to be square footage-wise as big or bigger than some of the bedrooms upstairs, and it has a closet, so why is this not considered a bedroom? So, that's just a question, I was looking at that. And it's 134 square feet, I believe, and some of the rooms upstairs are under 130, and this has a closet, so why is it not a fourth bedroom?
The labeling is how the applicant provided it.
Okay. So, we're looking at four-bedroom units, possibly?
Possibly, I would just-
It doesn't have to have a bathroom.
I would just note that that doesn't really have implications code-wise.
No, no.
Because our parking requirement is not based on bedrooms and so forth, so.
I just think, as a unit, it looks like a four-bedroom unit. Why are we not calling it a four-bedroom unit?
Yeah, maybe it's a flex space.
Yeah. And then going on about the offsite, I get the idea of what you're initially doing with your offsite energy. It really has nothing to do with the residents. What you're just trying to do is make a net zero project by providing electricity to the grid in another means. I think that's creative. I don't think it's successful here. I, as a building manager, I understand that there are ways we can measure the energy going out of that building, and we can track that. It would be a horrendous amount of work for staff to do, and I'm concerned that if it doesn't produce enough, we're not going to know that. And I agree that, I think, as a, you know, when you're talking about trying to make them cost-affordable, you guys, as a project, are going to have to put photovoltaics somewhere. That's going to be a cost to you. So, whether that's directly related to this project or not, you're going to have to recover that cost, and I got a feeling you're going to put it into the price of these condos, even though the benefit is not in the condos. So, I think that, you know, as a selling point, I think it is better to put them on the project, because I think everybody, if they're buying a green condo, they want the benefits themselves of getting the cost savings benefit. And these are flat roofs, so if you- And these are flat roofs, so if you put the photovoltaics on the roof, and they're third story, no one is going to see those from the street. So the other thing, you know, I understand is you may not get the option of a rooftop, but I think if people have the outside space that's proposed here, and they have net energy, they're not going to pay anything for energy, I think they could forego a roof deck. So I would look more seriously as bringing that back in. I, living in a condo and having guests come from out of town, and I know how this city is always battling for street parking, I think that the street, the one guest parking should stay in the project, and put that, that's one less car that's on the street that's in competition for the other neighbors, because I know basically neighbors are always concerned about losing their own street parking. I like what the staff says about relocating that and the bicycle parking, and in that, some of that green space on one side or the other, you could put in a patio with a barbecue, a community barbecue or area, so. And then on that bonus room in the, on the first level, I don't understand why the door to that patio, which I agree with Commissioner Donaldson, it doesn't seem like a very pleasant place to be, or to have a patio, it's going to be awfully shady and dark, but if you were to have that, I would see the door coming off the bedroom, or the bonus room downstairs, more beneficial than coming through the garage. And what you could do is relocate the window that's on the wall, so you could have the door going to the patio, and then the window on the opposite wall, and that way you'd still have a solid wall for a bed, to sit in that room or something. So I think those are all my comments, but we do need a fleshed-out plan, at least sometime going down there, you may come back for another study session, which I would advise, because we're probably going to want to look at it a little more closely before we go to an approval. So just flesh out your plans. The other concern I have, and maybe staff can answer this, you want a three-and-a-half-foot tree well, so is that going to reduce the sidewalk, or are we going to push the sidewalk farther towards the development?
The second one, so you maintain the same width of the sidewalk, but there's enough room there for flexibility on the width.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, I don't want to lose any sidewalk width. So other than that, I think that's all my comments for now. Good luck coming back.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I agree with practically every comment that I've heard from the rest of my fellow commissioners at this point. Just a couple to add, looking at the material board, I was confused a little bit, there, it looks like we're seeing EPE or something like that, some kind of natural wood siding for certain locations and for the fence, but then in looking at the material board, I did not see that, but I saw a pre-finished yellow siding of some nature, so I'm just curious if that was intended to be an alternate or a value engineering item in lieu of the EPE or redwood or whatever is being shown here. And then, I think the material board also showed stucco, whereas this is looking, at least on the renderings, like possibly a fiber cement rain screen of some sort. Yeah, I guess, I mean, the one guest parking spot, I just, living in a, in a building with an HOA, I just wonder how, how the CCNRs manage, who gets to use the guest parking spot, and if it's just like first come, first served, somebody's, somebody's significant other might be taking that spot up for a good long time. I think the, you know, with the amount of paving that's being shown, you know, I'd be, I guess it's, it's being shown as permeable paving, so it'd be nice if it was some kind of a grass paver kind of combination, or something that would actually make it feel like a nice courtyard. And I guess my last comment is just, and it really isn't for the applicant, it's more for staff, when I look at these projects, especially one of this scale, with the 15-foot front setback, you know, I, you know, I think it's, it came up on another project that was a little bit larger scale, and, and we talked about the Glass House project that had the 15, or the setback in, in the front, but like, you know, it's just strange, this sort of 15-foot setback makes it feel kinda, kind of suburban, especially when the building immediately adjacent to it on one side is, has a zero setback. I think a lot of the buildings along this stretch on the opposite side of the street, et cetera, have a zero setback, except for the townhouse built, I mean, part of townhouse has maybe like a five-foot setback or something, and then the other townhouse building, the abandoned house or whatever it is, just has like a big kind of overgrown front parking area or something, so. I don't know that the 15-foot setback really does us justice, I mean, it's a rela, you know, for three-story buildings on either side of a street that's, you know, at least wide enough for cars and parking, it just, it kind of creates more of a suburban feel, or I think of some of the, like, 1960s, 70s affordable housing in, in like the Fillmore in San Francisco that kind of has that, just like a limited little green setback for a three-story building, and seems odd to me, so maybe we might want to revisit that at some point.
And on that, is, so is it changing a setback if we agreed with Chair Gunkel that it really is unnecessary, maybe we could lose 10 feet down the front and pull the building away from the back line, and give the neighbors more breathing space, would that take a major change in zoning, or?
Well, it's a guideline of the North Hollis Plan. So it's not, you know, it's not a variance from a guideline. The commission would have to, I guess, make a determination that the project was generally compliant with the North Hollis Plan, and if you can figure out a way to finesse the 15 feet, then you could do that.
Does that kind of like the idea, would give the, if we could move it forward another 10 feet?
It just puts the trash even closer to the street.
But it's enclosed, you'd see.
I hate trash next to the street. I have a question, though.
Well, the trash could still be setback somehow.
We could put the trash in the back maybe, and then, but then you have the 65th Courtyard problem, which I also hate as a runner, I hate running through that. I have a question also for staff, the height restriction is 30 feet. If they build a 30-foot structure and they put photovoltaic panels on the roof, do they count as part of the structure or not?
No.
Okay.
The 30 feet is to the top of the roof, projections are allowed above the top of the roof, and there's a whole list in the planning regulations of what projections are allowed, but that certainly would be acceptable.
Someone help me with, just an, oh.
Yeah, they're also exempt from design review.
Okay, and so someone just help me, though, just conceptualizing a visual, since it's not on this proposal, like, how tall does a residential PV panel stand? Because I know they're like not flat exactly, they're like at a little angle.
I couldn't answer that, I mean, I, I think the PV company or somebody has to design it and figure out how, it has to be angled in order to maximize-
Sun exposure.
Sun exposure.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't think there's a simple answer for that.
It's usually latitude.
It's by latitude, it's just the angle by latitude.
The angle equals the latitude.
Yeah.
But you still, you just, you can, you can make it completely flat, it's just slightly less efficient.
Yeah, I was just curious, because I've been wondering how that, it's the same thing with other projects we've seen, where the building is X-high, but then you see that the ground on one side of the street is like five feet higher than the ground on the other side of the street, in a couple cases we've seen, so it changes the overall height of the building in terms of the person's perception, so I just wanted to check.
Are there any other comments?
Chair Gunkel, I do have one observation I'd just like to make. I've been browsing through our planning regulations parking section, and contrary to what I thought I remembered, I can't find anything that specifically speaks to guest parking in terms of its design or location, or that it has to be separate from resident parking or anything like that. It's just a number that's added to the parking requirement. So I think as long as the, as they remain within the five to eight spaces that the code requires, you could have six resident spaces and no guest spaces, for example, if, if that was amenable to the commission.
Any other comments? Thank you. Then we'll move out of the study session, Commissioner comments?
I just had a question, just a, I realize staff has got a ton of things going on, and the City Council has not asked you to do anything, of course, recently, but just out of curiosity, Commissioner Keller has been really good about keeping us on about a sign study session, is that for May?
I don't believe it will be May at this point, but the city attorney and planning staff are meeting soon to discuss the sign regulations and required amendments, and we'll get back to you as to when we can schedule that study session.
And then the small business bonus points, that was March or April originally, but I realize things have changed.
Well, yes, I mean, we were waiting for our new economic development and housing manager to come on board. I believe I included you in the email announcing his appointment, he starts next Monday, Chad Smalley from Richmond, and he has a lot of experience dealing with small businesses. I thought it would be beneficial for everybody to have him play a major role in that project. So he'll need a little bit of time to get up to speed, so I'm not sure exactly when, obviously it's not March or April at this point.
That's okay, I just, that's great to know, thank you.
It's certainly on our radar screen, and I've already briefed him about it, that it's going to be one of his, say, four or five major assignments when he first gets here. So, yeah, I mean, it'll be within, within the next few months.
Okay.
All right, thank you, the meeting is adjourned.